After this presentation. So my name is Nikell Allen. I am the Director of Open Government for the District of Columbia, and this is the Open Meetings Act Training for Public Charter School Board of Trustees. So our first slide, of course, is the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act is the body of law that we're discussing today that now the public charter schools are members of, so to speak, or are now subject to. So please keep this in mind when conducting your meetings. And a little bit about our mission. And it's good to understand the why behind what we do. So our mission with the Office of the Open Government is to ensure that government operations at every level are transparent, open to the public, and promote civic engagement. So in the context of meetings, as to the why, having your meetings open gives the public a bird's eye view into your operations so that it inspires confidence in them, that actions you're taking in a meeting forum is one that they can understand and that is above board. More about us. The Office of Open Government, we are an office within the Board of Ethics and Government Accountability. And we educate public bodies on open meetings laws, and we also educate the public on open meetings laws. We are also in charge of enforcing those laws. Enforcement, from our perspective, is educational at this point. So what we're looking to do with this group is to make sure you're up to speed with Open Meetings Act and its requirements, and we're here to provide assistance. So our posture, as far as the Open Meetings Act is concerned with these public bodies, is one of education. We also provide training and advice on the implementation of the District of Columbia Freedom of Information Act. As an entity, DC Public Charter School Boards of Trustees and DC Public Charter Schools are not subject to FOIA, but that's just another part of what we do. And we are also a general advocate for government openness and transparency. So we do advocate for open government and transparency issues before the District of Columbia Council. We do so in public forums. You'll see us out in the community. So the first thing is, what is a meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act? Well, first of all, you have to have a quorum of members of your public body. So if you're conducting government business and you are considering conducting and advising on public business, and you're in a meeting in person by telephone conference, video conference, or other electronic means of communication, then that is a meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. And I hope, give me one moment. We've got some more folks who've joined that need to promote to panelists. Okay. So these elements that are on this particular slide must be present in order for your gathering to constitute a meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. So if you think about committee meetings, which is usually less than a quorum, that's not a meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. So a meeting is not a chance gathering where no business is discussed or a press conference. And note, if there's no quorum, then there is no meeting. Now, back to the chance gathering. If you happen to meet one another and you are together, you should not discuss your public business because then it could become a meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. So keep in mind that requirement. Consider conducting and advising on public business. So if you see each other out and you're all together, talking about social things, just talking about the weather, whatever, it's fine, but you should refrain from discussing your public business. So a public, your meeting must be open unless the Open Meetings Act permits closure. And these are exceptions to the Open Meetings Act that I'll be getting into shortly. So as far as these exceptions go, our office is available to walk you through the process as to whether or not what you're conducting should be in a closed meeting or not. So we're always available to assist with that. So a meeting is open if the public is permitted to be physically present, the news media is permitted to be physically present, or the meeting is televised. So as I mentioned earlier, subcommittee meetings are not meetings that are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And also email exchanges between members of the public body are not considered meetings. So these are definitions of part of public bodies that are subject to the Open Meetings Act. So you see the Board of Trustees of Public Charter Schools are highlighted, but also included in this group are Government Councils, including the DC Council, Boards, Commissions, and similar entities. A Board that supervises or controls an agency, and an Advisory Board that takes official action by the vote of its members in meeting for such purpose. Excluded from the Open Meetings Act are Courts, the Mayor's Cabinet, professional and administrative staff of the public body when gathered outside of the presence of a quorum. An ANC meeting are not subject to the Open Meetings Act. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is notice of the meeting. So we're kind of getting into now the how of complying with the Open Meetings Act. So notice requirement. As early as possible, but notice must be given 48 hours or two business days before each meeting, whichever is greater. A notice must be physically posted in the office of the public body or a place readily accessible to the public, and notice must be posted on the website of the public body or the District of Columbia website. I just got a question about questions. Yes, you can put it into the Q and A. I need to make sure that I can see it. I hope it'll pop up. But you can put a question into the chat box, or you can also just take yourself off mute and ask a question if you have one through the course of this presentation. It's meant to be interactive. So, you know, please feel free to stop me for any questions that you may have. So upcoming meetings. An annual scheduled meeting, which is coming up, must be published in the DC Register, other than you guys. So you do not have to publish your meetings in the DC Register. So the public health emergency. So during this, because of the public health emergency which we're in now, all meetings are required to be remote, and the physical posting requirements are waived. So all you have to do now in the public health emergency is to make sure that your meetings are publicized on your website. And you can also use our website to publicize your meetings. So what should the notice include? So basically, you're trying to make sure that everyone has basic information so they can attend your meeting. So it must include the time, date, location, and proposed agenda. If there'll be a closed part of the meeting, the notice must indicate that part of the meeting will be closed, and the notice also needs to cite the Open Meetings Act justification for the closure. And also on your meeting notice, you need to give notice to the public that your meeting is covered by the Open Meetings Act, and the complaint or questions concerning the meeting will come to this office, the Office of Open Government. So this phrase here should be at the bottom of your meeting notice. And that's in our DC Regulations, Open Meetings Regulations. So justification for a closed meeting. I anticipate I may get some questions about this. So I'm just going to just run through it. I mean, you can see them here. Court order of statute, a negotiation, attorney-client privilege, trade secrets, testing and grading, personnel, matters involving students' personal identifiable information, or PII, evaluation by eligible chartering authority, training, collective bargaining negotiations, administering, preparing, or grading tests, deliberations, public safety, and investigations. So I have a question here. For committee meetings, if we have a small board such that a quorum of the board is meeting in a committee meeting, does that qualify as a meeting and need to follow OMA guidelines? Yes, that meeting does need to follow Open Meetings Act guidelines because of a quorum. I want to ask us so we can kind of work through that issue to see how that's actually functioning. I know that public charter schools function a little differently to some of our other public bodies. So that might be something that we need to talk offline about. We're happy to help you work through that. Okay, so the protocol. Okay, let's see. Can you provide examples of deliberations that justify closed meetings? Okay, for example, if you're considering employee discipline and you need to, I mean, I'll go on another one, but if you need to discuss the ins and outs of that, any type of decision-making is a deliberation. So it's meant to capture something that would contain confidential information that is kind of mirrors what we lawyers call the deliberative process privilege. So you are together, having a discussion about a final or formal decision that your board will be making. So that's what generally has covered. Hope that answers that question. So protocol for closed executive session. So this is how you actually go into closed session. So you're going to open the public meeting and establish that you have a quorum. You move into executive session. So you say, you file a motion that I do, we would like to enter into executive session to discuss personally identifiable information of a student. So from what I say, I still move, and then there would be a second. And then you go into, you take a vote. And if the vote passes, you go into executive session. So in the virtual environment that we're in now, you should be taking a roll call vote. So what that would mean is you call out the name of a person. I've seen it to the end here, I don't want to call you out, so I think, and her. Have you voted? You would say, aye. Darren Riley, have you voted? Aye. And then so on, until everyone has voted. And if everyone votes yes, your motion will pass, and then you enter into executive session. Now, kind of one question with that that may come up is recording. And you should record the executive session part of your meeting, but that recording is not to be made public. And I see that Attorney Johnny Barton, our Chief Counsel, has just joined us. So he's on the line, so I'll welcome him. And he may also chime in and answer some of these questions as well. So protocol for closed sessions. So once you're in the closed session, only discuss the matters that are referenced in the draft agenda. So that's the notice you gave to the public that included the citation to the law while you're closing the meeting. So you can only discuss things referenced in that agenda. So if something comes up that's not on the agenda but that should be discussed in a closed session, you'll probably, you need to table it and have another meeting to discuss it because you didn't give proper notice to the public. So in order to comply with the law, if something, again, comes up that might be, fall under one of the exceptions, you're going to have to table it. You can't talk about it unless you gave proper notice. And then, as I said before, make sure you record what was discussed in executive session. And once you're finished, you're going to need to reopen your public meeting. And then if you took any action that you need to report back, you reported back in the public portion of the meeting. So for example, if you got together to discuss, and this is another deliberation. Let's say you wanted to give someone an award or something, and you were discussing the merits and voting on who would get this award. You go to the public portion of the meeting, and you can report back to the public that outcome, if that's something that you wanted to do at that time. And so just as a question, boards cannot discuss anything that's not on the proposed agenda? Yes, that's correct. The point of that is you shouldn't discuss anything that's not on the agenda because you didn't give notice to the public about what was in the meeting. So, you know, what I recommend is setting forth in your agenda kind of broad categories that will allow for you to discuss the topics that you need to during your meeting. But you should be restricting your discussion to what's on the agenda. And that takes some planning. And you might need to amend the agenda if some things come up. But make sure that if you do need to amend the agenda, you do so within the proper notice period. So recording requirements, the next topic. You are required to record your public meetings. This is important because it creates a record of your meetings. And we look at it this way, as public bodies. We look at it like we're coaches for a team, so we want to leave our playbook behind for the next people who come after us. So kind of the why behind recording and keeping records is so that folks who are predecessors, I think that's better, right? Or subsequently, sorry. Well, like, for your predecessors, so you can see what they did. And the folks who come after, they can see what you did. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. So with that said, what we require, audio recording, video recording, transcript, and detailed meeting minutes. Now, kind of what comes up, a question about detailed meeting minutes is how detailed. So we're not looking for you to have a transcript or a word-for-word. So detailed meeting minutes means enough information so that someone can ascertain what actually happened at the meeting. So that's how we look at it. So again, kind of spine posts to actions are what we're looking for there. And again, if you have questions as these things come up or you need assistance with putting these things together, we're happy to do that for you. Public question requirements during the public health emergency. They're waived right now. But we do suggest that you publish your meeting materials, recordings as soon as possible, just so you do not have a backlog. And again, to keep the public informed as we are in a posture of meeting away from the office. The publication requirement. As applied by the OOG, I think I just said this. The draft detailed minutes must be publicly available no later than three business days after the meeting or 38 business days for the Board of Trustees of Public Charter Schools. Audio recordings, video recordings, and transcripts, which is a copy of the full record, must be available no later than seven business days after the meeting. But again, keep in mind that these time periods are told right now. This, well, this is one that's going to have to work out because we are under a different format with public charter schools. But record maintenance, I'm just going to kind of put a pin in this topic. So you should follow the record maintenance for these meetings, or what you have, I guess, in your documents pertaining to record maintenance. So we would require an ask that you preserve all of your meeting materials for a minimum of five years. I see I'm making one more person's panelist that have a question here. What do you mean by publishing recordings? My understanding is that public inspection means they can come view the recording or transcript but not publish or post it. But what that means is it should be online on your website. So these are two separate things. But yes, public inspection, they should be able to come to you physically and get a copy of that recording or have you provide it there. But, you know, with the advent of technology, you should be able to put your meeting recording on a website. If you help that, you know, again, Kevon Bridget is our IT specialist, and he's very good with putting our meetings on, online. So we can put your meetings on our website, and we can help you put them on your website or get them on YouTube. But yes, those meeting recordings need to be online. Now, the portion that's going to be online is only the public portion. No requirement that your executive meeting be online and available to the public. Other requirements. So does the public have a right to comment? Only if you're enabling legislation or in your case, your rules allow for public comment. However, you may have the public comment if you wish for them to comment. That's completely within your control. And you have the full ability to regulate the time allotted for comment and how that happens. So that's something that is completely within your control. This will come up generally when you don't allow public comment. So you may get a complaint or a request to have someone comment. So again, that's completely up to you whether or not you want to allow them to, unless your rules are such that you're required to have the public comment. Parliamentary procedure. You may conduct your meetings, and we do recommend usually using Robert's Rules of Order. So kind of like that motion that I modeled for you earlier. That's parliamentary procedure. So if you require any type of training or assistance with that, our office can provide that training upon request. So how do we cancel a meeting? So a meeting cancellation is a change in schedule. In much, in most instances, it requires as much notice as possible, but not less than 48 hours or two business days, whichever is greater, before the meeting occurs. And you also need to establish the record on your website. And you should have a list of your annual meetings. And on that list of annual meetings, wherever that cancellation occurs, you should just keep that date on there, but put canceled next to it to give notice that that meeting was canceled for your record. So can we hold an electronic meeting? Yes, and you must during the public health emergency. So you can meet via video, electronic conference, or other electronic means if reasonable arrangements are made to accommodate for public's right to attend. The meeting is recorded, the votes are taken by roll call, and all Open Meetings Act provisions are adhered to. Can we hold an emergency meeting? Yes. A public body may meet in case of any emergency. So when you're in that emergency meeting, the presiding officer must do the following. Give notice to the public at the same time the notice is given to the Board of Trustees. You need to have your chair or other presiding officer open the meeting with a statement, explain the subject of the meeting, and they also need to explain the nature of the emergency. And then you also need to explain how public notice was provided. So in this instance, it could be an email, it was posted on the website. I'm sorry, let me take, let me roll back that email. So it should be, you know, public notice provided. It should be, for example, it was on the website. Next, we're going to go into the complaint process. As I mentioned previously, on your meeting notice, there will be a mechanism for the public to let us know if there are any complaints. So this is that process. So an agreed party, including anonymous parties, may complain to the Office of Open Government for relief if their, if a meeting has been conducted in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Now, this may refer to past meetings. Their complaint must be submitted in writing, in person, online, mail, or via email. And we have 14 business days to resolve the complaint, which could include additional, requesting additional information, dismissing the complaint, issuing a binding advisory opinion, or having a conciliation. So if there is a Open Meetings Act complaint against your public body, we do give you notice, so you will know about it. And we give you opportunity to respond, and we consider that in our evaluation and resolution of the Open Meetings Act complaint. So appeals for OMA advice or opinions. An agreed party may appeal any one of my decisions to the Board of Ethics and Government Accountability for reconsideration. This appeal has to be in response to a public official or employee's request for advice or one that I did to a sponte. So what that means is, for non-lawyers, is I can, on my own, issue an advisory opinion on a topic that I deem appropriate. But if someone is agreed by it, they may appeal to the board. So we've come to the end of this formal presentation. And this is Open Meetings Act cheat sheet. So seek, so it's a quick reference. And all these materials will be on our website. The follow-up and publishing recordings. What is the site for the requirement? I see the public inspection of recordings mentioned in two dash five seven eight B, but I don't see publication and posting mentioned there. I will get that to you offline, unless I see Attorney Barton is here, unless he's able to provide that online. Me looking it up would probably not, would not work out well. But Christine, I'll make sure that I get that to you, and I'll also put that on our website. So all the materials here and the recording will be on open-dc.gov under Documents. Uh, so the OMA cheat sheet, now quorum triggers or no quorum, uh, no formal action. Uh, notice forty-eight hours or two business days, whichever is greater. Can I see another que- uh, okay, I see another comment. See public inspection of recordings, but not see the publication post. Okay, um, I, I will get a firm answer to you all on that. If someone actually, uh, well, I have your emails, so I can send that via email. Um, physical posting of notice and web notice is required. Uh, notice equals date, time, location, and draft agenda. And you must record both open and closed sessions, um, but only the open session should be available to the public. Um, recording of the public meeting must be available to the public. Um, and posting on the web detailed meeting minutes um, on the next meeting date and draft of the three business days. And to post anything on open-dash-dc.gov, please contact our IT specialist. Okay, um, this is our contact information. Um, if you would like to, if you have questions and want to um, talk to us after this session. Um, and that's it, we're kind, we're at the end, um, the complete end. So, thank you for your attention. Um, and if you'd like to come on with any questions or anything that I need to clarify, um, please do so at this time. Okay, I see, uh, Laura, I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Sorry, I realize I'm, I'm joining with my phone, I apologize. Um, oh, okay. My, my understanding, and I'm, I'm sorry if you answered this, I'm, I think maybe I just missed it. Um, uh, my understanding is that we either need to post a transcript or we post detailed minutes, that it's like one or the other, is that the, is that the right understanding or, or is that mistaken?
Um, yes, either or, you don't have to post both.
Okay, great.
So, you're correct.
Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome. Hey, are there any other questions or comments, or does anyone have, have any comments? Hi, Shannon. Okay, Shannon, I can't hear you. Hold on, let me see if I can find you here. Okay, I see your, your microphone is up, I'm just having problems hearing you. If any, if everyone, I don't know why I can't hear you. Hey, you try again? Hmm, I can't hea- can anyone else hear Shannon? Maybe it's just me? Okay, she'll join by phone. Okay.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted, I just wanted to, uh, so thank you for, for hosting this Q and A session. I know that schools have been um, doing a lot of work to come into compliance with OMA. I think uh, what I've been telling people from the, on the charter side is that we want to make sure we do it right from the very beginning. So, there's been a lot of stress and anxiety uh, to get ready for this. Um, one thing I noted that I wanted to draw um, people's attention to, and if you wouldn't mind repeating it, is the discussion around records maintenance. Um, that was a question that we had early on because I think that the way that the regs are written is for government agencies and how they maintain records. But just for the school leaders on the call, if you wouldn't mind kind of re- recapping um, what the records requirements are and how it might be different than for public charter schools um, from uh, the government agencies.
Right, um, thank you for, for that. So, the regs for government agencies require um, the government agencies to follow the record retention schedule, the general retention schedule of the district, and keep those records for five years. Um, obviously, since the records retention schedule in the District of Columbia does not apply to public charter schools, uh, we are recommending um, that you maintain those records for five years. But what should control um, is your, your general records retention schedule um, that you have for your um, public charter schools. Because the law does not specifically speak to you as an entity. Um, so I, I would just say as an gesture, we will recommend or request that you uh, keep those records for five years or whatever your record retention schedule is um, for your organization, um, that's what will control those records.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, uh, general statements?
It, it looked like there may be a couple of new ones in the, in the chat box. I know there's one around trade secrets.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if, um, if the closed session question's already been answered.
Okay. Let me look in the Q and A, I'm looking in the chat, so maybe, okay, both in the chat. Sorry if I'm mumbling, I do that sometimes, I guess because I'm home by myself, I'm talking to myself sometimes, so sorry.
No, no worries, I noticed my, I've been having much longer conversations recently, so uh, I totally get that.
So, as long as you don't answer back, you can talk to yourself as much as you want. Okay, um, during the last training, the topic of charter schools' trade secrets, not just fingers' trade secrets, came up as a basis for a closed session. I think OOG was going to look into that and get that to us, um, but intended to be flexible on that. Um, and, and yes, that's still the case, um, we don't have a solid answer. Um, but again, you know, I, I did have a discussion um, on the record um, during the council hearing uh, about that and I know that was a big, um, a big topic and is of, of import um, to your organization. Yeah, I will say, again, this is one of those fuzzy areas um, because the, the law itself is based on FOIA. Um, and for you all who are lawyers, you may know there's been a recent Supreme Court case even about um, the applicability um, of this, this FOIA rule. But given the nature of your business, um, I will, I actually unofficially say, uh, yes, that would be, be for an executive um, session um, under the trade secret exception. But that's something that I, just because of the public interest in the topic that I probably will need to put something out in writing um, concerning that. But I, I can just say, kind of as, as, as my initial assessment, that that is something um, that could be in an executive session. Again, w- we understand that the nature of your business is different than the government um, and the law and regulations need to catch up um, to, I wouldn't say they put a square peg in a round hole, but that's kind of what happened. Um, so there's an evolution process, but that's going to have to, to uh, take place. And we will be issuing regulations um, some point in near future to implement the changes. Um, so this is one of those topics, I guess you, you can um, let Shannon know and your, and your lawyers know um, kind of these and other issues um, that may um, not directly fall under the law. But we are, you know, again, willing to work with you and then, and I said earlier, we're in an education posture, I think, on both sides, because I need to learn your business model um, so I can better understand um, how the law applies, should apply um, to the spirit of the law to where it, it's not directly applicable, um, applies uh, to public charter school port, Boards of Trustees and your meetings. Um, so, I know that's a long-winded answer, but I hope that kind of gets us closer to the correct answer. Okay, I'm not, I think I got, did I get everything in the chat? I think so. Oh, the last one, if the board isn't closed session, do we have to return to open session at the end of the meeting? Uh, yes, you do have to formally close that open portion of the meeting. So, you would, again, go back into the open portion and just, and ended, if you didn't have anything, report out. Um, you don't have to report anything um, out, you, but you do need to formally close that meeting. Uh, okay, meeting in person, uh, what do you do if you need to?
Can I ask just a follow-up question there? I apologize for interrupting you.
Yes.
Oh, no, that's all right. That's the case, even if your whole meeting is closed, right? So, like if you have a, um, a board retreat that is a hundred percent about training and you have no public business, you still have to open the meeting publicly, vote to go into closed session, come out of closed session, report out any actions that were taken, and then vote to, to close the meeting, is that right? Or you have to end the meeting.
Okay, that's correct. Okay, um, okay, then I do see another question, when meeting in person, um, oh, I see a raised hand, yes? Uh, this Laura? I thought you raised your hand.
Yeah, I, yeah, uh, I'll be the like embarrassing person who, who's like already screwed up. Um, I tried really hard to record my meeting, I thought I had done everything right. And then when I went and looked at the recording, um, it's like thirty seconds long. Um, so clearly something went wrong. Um, it was unintentional, like, but wh- what do I do now? Do I just like need to post like a paper that says like technical issue? Like, check the, the notes, like what?
Yes, I, I would do that and um, you need to provide the detailed meeting minute um, so that there's a record of what occurred at the meeting. So, are, was someone taking minutes? I hope so.
Well, the, I was planning to use the video to like create, like, so I, I have like the high-level notes, but I don't have, I don't have detailed notes because I was going to create the transcript from the video.
I see. Okay, well, try to, you know, as, as you can, um, piece together um, what happened at the meeting so you can have some minutes. Um, and again, and just note that, um, you know, due to a technical error, uh, the meeting wasn't recorded. Um, these things happen, there's, yeah, nothing that you could do about that. So, um, that's how I would, would cure that. Um, just as much as possible, make sure that people understand what happened at the meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, when meeting in person, what do you do if you need to cancel for inclement weather? Is that possible, or could you move the meeting from in-person to virtual? Um, both and, um, you just need to give as much notice as possible um, when moving to the virtual meeting from in-person. Um, and again, just make sure that you meet all those electronic um, meeting requirements. And as far as canceling the meeting, um, yes, you may cancel the meeting um, due to inclement weather. You just need to give, again, that proper notice um, of the meeting cancellation. Um, and it would actually probably be, could be a rescheduling, maybe rescheduling um, the meeting. Um, so you just need to give as much notice uh, as possible. Okay, I'm going through the chat, uh, again. Uh, yes, uh, I think that's what I answered that. So, all portions of the meeting um, need to be recorded, just to reiterate. Um, but what needs to be made public is just the public portion. So, you're um, again, you're keeping the um, executive part for your records. And also, if there is an issue that comes up, um, you have that record to prove what was done or what wasn't done. Okay, um, so, this is about in-person, um, do we need both a video and auto, audio recording? Um, an audio recording is sufficient um, in-person, so you do not have to have a video recording. Um, the, yeah, the recording can be video or audio. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, um, I'll, in the training session. Um, and I want to thank you all again for your participation and also for your, your willingness and um, hard work in getting up to speed with the process. Um, if you have any other questions or issues or anything comes up, even if it's during your meeting, um, we're always here to help. Um, if you need us to attend one of your meetings, to walk you through the process, we're also available to do that. Um, so please reach out to us. And um, I hope everyone has a safe uh, holiday season. I hope you all um, stay well uh, through this process, um, mentally and physically. And uh, we hope to see you soon and um, I, I, gosh, I just, hard to believe we're in December, but we're here. Um, so everyone take care and uh, we will see you soon, so bye-bye.